All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Joint Workshop of the LaPorte County Commissioners and the Council for April 7th regarding the Meadowview Estates, Meadowview Estates subdivision water problem. Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, if you guys would like to start off and just kind of give a background of what's going on, and then we're going to have, Dwayne, is our county engineer on?
No, we just have, we do have our...
I don't believe so, no.
No. So, Dwayne will handle all that.
Randy, this is Sheila. It might be helpful if you tell us, we can't see you, so we don't know who's in the room with you. If you could just let us know who's in the room, so we kind of know who's speaking.
So, so when, where's the camera pointing? Is it?
Is there a camera pointing somewhere, Sheila?
There's a picture of LaPorte County, and I presume that's Randy, but that's what's showing up for me.
My arms waving?
At the courthouse.
See something? No, it's a picture of...
Oh, you know what you did.
Photo of the courthouse.
Get out of the way, get out of the way, get out of the way.
Just give us a moment. We have a magician.
Much better, thank you.
There it is. I didn't know I was going to have to do the IT tonight, too. There. We didn't know what you saw there, that's, I apologize. So, I got a new hire working here next to me, so.
Again, pay that extra dollar for it.
So, we're going to go ahead, so if you'd like to introduce yourselves, tell us who you are, and...
Should we unmask then?
You can take it down.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Jeanette James Raymond, and I am here with Jason Schoeff and my husband Kevin Raymond, and we all live in Meadowview Estates subdivision. And we wanted to thank you for allowing us to speak with you this evening. We are three of five committee members that represent the residents of Meadowview Estates who are experiencing the subterranean flooding in their basements, and we were committee formed in 2018. We don't want to take too much of your time tonight, but just to give you a brief history of the situation and its timeline for those who have joined the county council and the county commissioners since 2009. Meadowview Estates 5th Edition was plotted to include 45 lots. It was approved by the LaPorte County Commissioners Stephen J. Worster, Michael T. Quinn, Richard J. Kraus on December 18th, 1995. However, the approved plat that is on record is noted to have replaced an original plat, which was recorded in plat book number 20, page 53, but unfortunately, it seems that the original is unable to be located, and we don't know if that would give any extra information that might be helpful in the situation. It is on record in the building commissioner's office that 18 of the 45 lots in the 5th Edition showed water level indicators of 54 to 30 inches from the surface of the ground through a soil study conducted by HMESC Incorporated in Valparaiso. However, none of these reports were shared with the homeowners upon pulling permits from the county prior to building. All these lots are located at the southernmost portion of Meadowview Estates.
Let me stop, back up. Who did you say reported the water level?
The soil studies were conducted by HMESC Incorporated.
For the septic systems.
They, that's who did all of the soil studies.
Okay.
And on the soil studies, which were never produced to any of the homeowners, but I did get them from the building commissioner after all of this started, the water level indicators were on those soil studies for each lot. In the fall of 2008, three homes began experiencing subterranean water pushing up through the floors of their basements. By summer of 2009, 15 homes were pumping water through the floors of their basements. And by summer of 2018, 29 homes in the 5th Edition were pumping from their basements, along with two homes in the 4th Edition of Meadowview Estates, totaling 31 homes within the subdivision, and that does not include any of the homes on 75 West that also regularly pump water, because there are several on 75 as well. In the past 13 years, more than 15 homeowners have lost their basements, some more than once. In the past two years, more than five septic systems have failed from hydraulic overpressurization. And we did get that information from a septic company who worked out there to install new systems. And we're very concerned that if the last three lots in Meadowview Estates, along with even some of the lots in Cipio Sunrise, were to be developed, that it's going to add to an already serious situation. We wanted to acknowledge and thank the drainage board, who have offered to help with financial resources, along with encouraging the county to find funds from the various departments, along with relieving us of fear every time the power goes out, that we'll lose our basements again. Many also have aspirations of one day selling our homes, which right now is very unlikely because of the situation. So, we really appreciate everybody coming together to try and help us find a solution.
As Jeanette said, my name is Jason Schoeff, and I just wanted to add a little bit during the last workshop, I heard a lot of questioning on the FEMA money that was available, and what happened, why it wasn't used. I reached out to Rick McVeigh, the former end county engineer who was on the project. What I was told by him, when you apply for FEMA grants, you apply for a certain thing, you're going to do this with the money, and if you change the plan, you can't keep the money. His explanation to me was, after a study was done of putting in a pumping station near the airport, they were afraid they were going to drain all of Door Village's well water. So, at that point, it was a, we can't do this, had to, basically, the money had to go back, and that is where that kind of stopped at. He's been more than willing to talk, I spoke about this at a couple of the previous commissioners' meetings, he's more than willing, any information he can give you guys, he's more than willing to discuss it, so.
So, I guess, I guess, my question, so what did, what was the solution in the grant that you received?
That was the original, what they were going to do is put in a pumping station, but after more studies were done, they just, they, whoever, I don't know who was involved, I just kind of got a brief overview from Rick McVeigh about, I'm not an engineer, I don't understand it, what the monies were to be used for and why they were not used.
So, they applied for the grant before they...
Before they did the study. Absolutely.
Okay. Makes a little bit more sense, so.
Good evening, as Jeanette said, her husband Kevin Raymond. I understand the scope of this project. I am a road construction foreman for Milestone, which used to be Walsh &amp; Kelly. I've been in the construction field for 43 years, so I understand what this project is, what the scope of the project is, and what the process will be. I'd just like to let you guys know, full disclosure, right now, we are not pumping, which, you know, knock on wood, but it doesn't mean that crisis solved, let's go on, there's still a problem there. But it does open up a window for the construction to start, because if water levels are down, that makes the construction easier. If water levels come up and you start the project, then you'll be battling the underground water, and you'll have to put in pumps or well points or something else. So, I'm afraid that we're in this little situation here where it would be really beneficial to start this project. I noticed on the materials list for the project that there are several manholes allocated for, and that would mean that we have plenty of places where we can start or stop. So, if we had to divide this project into phases, we could stop it wherever the manholes are designed to be, and pick up possibly at another time, you know, I hate for this to drag out for years, but if it has to, we understand, if we understand that money just doesn't fall from the sky. So, if we can get partial funding and start at the ditch and work our way through 400 South, and get at least that stretch done, or something like that, you know what I mean? Get that out of the way, the school buses and everything, and then work our way towards the Noack subdivision, then, you know, that might be an option. It also would kind of help, I think, the county highway department, because that way they wouldn't have put out as much money at the same time to do the entire paving project. They could also do it in phases, which would not take so much from Mr. Young's budget, so.
Mr. Young retired.
Oh, I didn't realize that, I'm sorry. So, good.
Dwayne Warner.
But I'm just offering that observation, that, you know, if we could, even if we have to break this down into pieces and make it more accessible.
And I apologize, I don't know that I've seen the actual drawings, have you?
I have not seen a drawing. Mr.?
Sullivan.
J. Sullivan.
Al Wallace.
Al Wallace.
Al Wallace.
And J. Sullivan came up with an itemized list, and Al gave us a copy of it, so I didn't know if you guys, I assumed all of you already had it. Anyways, but the point was that there are manholes allocated, so you could do, you know, so many feet of pipe and a manhole, and you cut that off.
And this is a storm drain that he's proposing?
Yes.
Just to lower the ground level, water, water table on there?
Correct.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, and J. Sullivan's not on? So, Dwayne?
Yes.
Have you, have you seen, have you seen the plan?
I, no, I have not seen a plan.
Mike, have you seen the plan?
Hello, Mike Pollan, former crew chief, LaPorte County Drainage Board. I have not seen the final plans from Burke Engineering. I will say that the gist of it is, these residents are pumping water from their basements onto the street, into the stormwater inlets, into the retention pond, percolate back into the ground, back into their basement, back out on the street, it's a vicious loop.
Right.
So, in layman's terms, what this plan will do is take that water that's being pumped out of these basements and get it away from that area to an adequate outfall, which is Kingsbury Creek. And it should mitigate how often they have to pump. I mean, the nature of this is subterranean, so nobody, you know, most of our drainage people are surface water experts, so this is in an area that's a tough one. It's, it's hard, and it's, we've been dealing with this for many years. I just want to say one more thing in regards to the grant that was applied for in 2008. That type of grant, to my knowledge, is not available at this time. Back then, we were declared a federal disaster area, there was flooding everywhere, we had National Guard deployed, there were levee breaches, it was a disaster all over the county. So, at that time, that was available, at this time, it's not available, but we could seek out other funding sources. I'll stick around in case you guys have any other questions, I can do my best to try to answer.
Right. Does anybody on Zoom have anything to offer?
I'd like to know if the developer of this subdivision has, bears any responsibility whatsoever for what's going on. Been following this for a couple, for a while now. What I was told is that when they first started building homes out there, they had no problem. It's this last bunch of homes that apparently have interrupted the underground, the subterranean water flow, and making it come up somewhere else. I don't know, if that's the case, that's kind of poor planning on somebody's part. But on one hand, we do owe it to our county residents to do what we can, especially since it's ruining our roads, but on the other hand, as we have stated in the past, we don't want to open a floodgate with everybody that's got issues in their subdivisions, so. But the original question is, the developer, does he bear any responsibility for what's happened here? Do we know?
You want me to answer that, or should we ask one of the attorneys to answer that?
That might be a good idea. Well, Randy, you're as good as an attorney, as far as I'm concerned, but I'd like a good official answer.
I've been called a lot of things, but...
Never that dirty word.
Is the developer still around?
You said that there were some...
There's still some lots, or is he still trying to sell them?
Yes.
So, he is actively, because I know in the last year or so, I don't know if I corresponded with you or somebody, but they said that, hey, he's got these lots for sale, and he's still trying to sell more lots.
Yes.
So, and that was my point.
You're afraid that if those lots got sold and became developed, that it would just add, because there wasn't a problem out there until those last few...
Could you come up to the microphone?
You've got to talk up there.
Sorry, because otherwise it can't get recorded.
That, that is a big concern for us. I was the one that emailed you, because when we saw that those lots went up for sale with a realtor, we knew that if they were sold, and people started digging for septic's and basements or whatever, it was going to add to the problem, because...
Are they still for sale?
The sign was taken down by the weather over the winter. I did call the realtor who put the sign up to let him know, hey, your sign was down, we found it in the yard, we have it, if you want to come and get it, and he never said they're still for sale, or anything like that. He just said, okay, I'll stop and get my, my stuff, because we had it. And so, I don't know if they're actually still for sale. I know that the developer still owns it, because I checked on Beacon, and he does still own those three lots, but I don't know if they're actually listed for sale right now.
Has the, and I know you don't have an association, but your group, your homeowners, anybody sought any legal ramifications from the developer?
I did at one time, yes.
And that didn't go anywhere?
The case was just thrown out.
And it was your single home?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think there were different reasons behind it, and I was beyond frustrated, so I just walked away, because I didn't want to even go there any further, but, but we do know that the houses that were existing out there before 2008 did not have any of this problem until that point. And there were, one, two, three, four, seven houses that were built between 2005 and 2008, and then it all just went crazy.
And they were all built by the same developer?
They, no, all different builders. All different builders, everybody, I mean, everybody had a different builder, different excavators, different concrete, I mean, when you look at how many homes are affected out there, it's just, there's, you can't say, oh, well, it had to have been a builder, because they're all different builders. I mean, there are so many different people involved in these 30-plus houses out there over a different period of time of them being built. Like I said earlier, even two homes in the 4th Edition are pumping water, and that's not even in that new section in the back. But those last few homes, once those all went in within that short period of time, it all started...
And they don't have mound systems out there?
No.
So, the groundwater level isn't up so high that it's interfering with septic systems? Now, you say it, I get what you're saying, but in other words, they're still, when they came in and put in a new system, they put in a new system, they didn't put in a mound system?
I believe so, yes.
Right. So, so the water tables must be, yeah, so anyway.
And I know that it was, somebody had asked at one meeting, why are we bringing this up again? You know, why, why is this coming to the table again? And I know it's, it's, it's hard, because you don't, you heard about it back in 2009 for three, four years, and then nothing happens, nothing happens, we get the grant money, nothing happens, you know, you're told no so many times, you get tired, and you just say, I guess we have to live with this. And yes, there are some years that we don't pump as much, and a lot of that has to do with, you know, the lake levels are up, we pump like crazy, the lake levels are lower, we pump moderately. But in 2009 and in 2019, we pumped so much that it was just beyond what we even could have fathomed happening out there. And so, yeah, there might be a little lulls here and there, but there's, somebody is always pumping out there. And within that 10-year period, from 10 years, from 2009 to 2019, we were pumping twice as much in 2019 than in 2009. And it shows, because we only had about 15 houses pumping in 2009, and now we have over 30, and it just keeps pushing up towards the north end of the subdivision, it's not just the southern end anymore.
So, I'm going to, I guess, repeat what Rich asked, is, does the developer bear any responsibility here, especially when he's still trying to sell more lots?
My understanding, Randy, is that the original developer that planted the subdivision is long gone. I mean, there have been other developers since then.
They're shaking their head, no. They're saying, no, it's the same guy.
Well, then, I'd be interested in seeing the litigation that this woman filed, and what the reason was for the dismissal, because the information we had was, the original developer, Noack subdivision? You believe they're still around?
They are still around.
Herb Noack is long gone, was that, who is the developer that took over after Herb Noack?
Herb Noack was the original owner and developed, and started the subdivision, and then the owners of the subdivision, or I should say, the lots that are left, and the ones that we bought all of our lots from, was Ron Noack. And his brother, Stephen Noack, is part owner of those remaining lots. So, when I bought my lot, when everybody in the 5th Edition bought their lots to build, it was purchased by Ron Noack, he, because the Noack family owned the property, and then he was the executor once his father passed.
And what I'm suggesting is that, I believe Herb Noack was the one who got the original plat approved, the subdivision, and the consents by the county, and I guess I go back to the memo that Mike Pollan put together on the 24th that sent out to everyone, because I think that's pretty good guidance on why he believes, and my office believes, that there is some county responsibility here.
And I, I know that the 5th Edition was approved in 1996. I'm not sure when Herb Noack passed away, and who was in charge of the subdivision when the 5th Edition was platted and approved, but that was in 1996.
And that was probably when Jim Blent was still here. I mean, the problem is, a lot of the key players are gone.
Right.
The building commissioner, which was Jim Blent at the time, he's gone.
Right.
And so, we have a problem with reconstructing something from, you know, 24, 25 years ago, when consents were given, that's part of the problem, I think, we face in legitimately going after a prior developer, Randy.
I guess, but here's, my issue is, is, and when we talked before, is, why is he, why are these people allowed to continue to sell these lots if the people that are going to buy these lots are going to build on them and have the same issues unless the county or, and I say the county, the commissioners direct, or the building department directs that these lots are not, in other words, we're either going to put a freeze on these lots being sold, because it doesn't make sense to allow people to buy these houses and allow more people to have more issues, and then it's going to be a bigger problem for us.
Agreed, and that's why I believe Mitch Bishop put together the memo he did back July 24th, 2019, that was sent around, that talks about the plan commission potentially having a sign-off sheet for anyone looking to build a home within such a district, a waiver would state that, you know, knowingly coming into an area with high water table, potentially alerting homeowners wanting to construct basements in an area that may be conducive to flooding due to high water. We, you know, the plan commission can probably put that kind of thing in going forward, but our problem is that a lot of this was already permitted, and I'll let Mike address.
Right.
Because I thought he laid it out well in his memo of March 24th, 2021.
I agree with the, I agree with the part about the building department giving them the person notice before they build, but you've got to make sure that people aren't buying the lot and sitting on it for a year, and then they have no recourse to go back and get their money back when they buy a lot that they think is buildable, because it's not, it's not public information out there that the water, that there's water issues. I mean, there is, but it's not, not in the sense, if someone is just driving through there from out of town, they wouldn't know any different.
Right.
So, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense that if we have an issue with the developer, even if the developer's gone, somebody airs, or somebody's still running this, selling them, that we allow them to communicate, pardon me, continue to be sold and just piling on to the problem, at least until we get the problem resolved.
Yeah, I would add, you know, when, when these lots are sold and people are building, we don't know the intention to put in a basement or a crawl space or a slab, you know, so there's houses across the street from houses that have basements, they have crawls, and they're not flooded. So, the other thing is, we don't have ordinances, to my knowledge, that we can force someone to build, to not have a basement, or to not have a basement.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the only, if somebody buys a lot, or has acreage, and they're going to build a house, the soil test is done for the septic.
To my knowledge, yes, and that's a health department function.
Correct. And that doesn't, that soil boring that he does to determine the water level height doesn't even come to the building department for an, to analyze it, or make a determination.
Yeah, I haven't dealt with any soil boring reports in my short tenure thus far, and I will, I will go a step further to piggyback on that these soil boring reports are done for the septic, and if you use it for more than that, all that really tells you is, at this depth, it indicates that there's water present, or has been present.
Right.
It doesn't say that there's a huge subterranean deluge, or it's once every few years, or a few drops, it just says there's water, water has been present at this depth. So, sometimes, and this isn't isolated to this area either, I'd say this is probably the worst.
Right.
But we have other areas where people get those soil boring reports, and they decide they still want to put in a basement, and they put in a pump or a NOVA system, expecting that they're going to have to pump sometimes. But, but even that report, to my knowledge, and I'm not a soil scientist or an expert on this, but to my knowledge, it doesn't forecast the extent of what kind of water problem you're going to have with subterranean water.
And it's not even anything that the building department analyzes when they give a permit for a basement or a crawl space. You don't, I mean, that's the developer, the builder, their determination.
Right.
Right. So, all right. Thank you, Mike. Is there anything else from, anybody, it'd be nice if J. Sullivan would have been here. I know Tony Hendricks is teaching tonight, so, and Mitch Bishop is on spring break with his kids, so.
I believe Tony and Christopher Burke have put together a plan that would help alleviate this. I mean, I thought that was sent out, everybody.
I've never seen a plan. I got the email from Tony Hendricks, right here, but I don't have...
So, regardless on who has maybe not seen the plan, my opinion is that there are very good options that we have to mitigate the situation, and I think that we would be better served in today's meeting to not rehash those options, but to move on to possible funding sources if, if, if the county's going to look at that.
I guess my thing is, is what are we funding, and what is the plan? That's what I was hoping to, so we knew, what's a price tag if we were to do it? Is it, can it be done in phases?
I do agree with that gentleman's statement, that it can be done in phases. I think that the, one of the latest plans that was submitted called for a 24-inch pipe, which is considerably less cost than...
That, that's spelled out in Tony's email.
Right, right.
But there's no, was there a drawing with it too? At one time?
I have, I'm no longer with the drainage board, and I've not been in the loop with Burke Engineering or Al Wallace, but as far as all of those technical... but as far as all of those technical issues, I think that they would be, he would be the proper person to address that. But basically, it's installation of pipes so that the water that's pumped out goes into those pipes to an adequate outfall and gets away from the area. So I think there's some consensus on the, on the experts that are looking at this as far as how to mitigate the situation. So I think that that, that part's been adequately covered.
Well, Mike, you probably have seen the report that was sent out that estimates repairs at anywhere from 635,000 to 772 on the two options that were given by Christopher Burke.
Did you read that?
And that's got various attachments as well that list what might be necessary. But again, the point that you made in your memo, Mike, was, look, this is affecting county roads. And there is an absolute necessity to deal with this because of the destruction and erosion of county roads. So I just, I thought your memo on the 24th of March was pretty good on this issue.
Thank you. And, you know, I would just piggyback on that, that that land, a lot of that land south of there is ag land. I've even met with that township trustee because some of that ag land has problem with water and crops not being able to be harvested there. There's development going on. There's probably gonna be future development. So if there was to be a drainage system put in there, it, I feel that it wouldn't just benefit the problem that we have now, but future development as well.
And, and so I guess the other part would be, why isn't this a drainage board issue, then?
Drainage board is surface water management. They oversee the urban drain system in Meadowview Estates. And this is a much larger problem than just Meadowview. That whole entire area is susceptible to this. And the, in an urban drain, there's a per-lot assessment somewhere between $150 on up per lot per year. Usually, there's a four-year ceiling on that so that if the drainage systems function adequately and there's no maintenance needed, then the assessment stops. But if there's sand, sediment buildup in the inlets and the retention ponds, a pipe gets disconnected under the road, whatever happens, then that money is taken out of there to pay for the repairs, and then the assessment starts back up. So that's the drainage board function in this. Now, when I was still there, I inspected the entire surface water system, and it was functioning adequately. And it's even taken that water that's being pumped out, it's going in the inlets, and it's going into the ponds where it's supposed to. Unfortunately, it's going back into the ground and back into their basements. So, you know, so that, so that's a drainage board function. Now, we're talking about funding sources. Could, could this per-lot assessment be used towards the infrastructure of this sort? It would barely be enough to make a minimum payment on a loan for 30 years, but it's, it's something. You know, MS4 is a stormwater entity. Maybe they could throw 20,000 at it to, to get something started, like we were talking about doing it in phases. But these are not, we're gonna need more funding than, than just those things. And I don't have.
Keep in mind that water and sewer projects are specifically designated uses under the American Rescue Plan funding. So if the council and commission determines this is an appropriate project, it could be added to your project list. The ordinance the commissioners just passed today provide that both the commissioners and the council are to confer collaboratively and come up with a list of projects that you think are necessary, reasonable and necessary. But this, this could arguably fall within that group.
So Rich, are you on there?
I am.
Can you, being the president of the commissioners, could you direct the county engineer and ask the surveyor and everybody, and make sure that everybody gets a copy of these reports so that we all know and see what the plan is? And if there's anything that Dwayne can do out there at the highway department to save some of the costs? Because I'm talking to Mike here. Mike hasn't seen, so you guys are talking plans and prices and everything like that. If we got sent, it got lost in translation or something, but I don't remember ever seeing it, so.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Because, I mean, we need to move ahead, and if we need to do some funding, we need to at least bring it to the council for a vote. I mean, at the very least. And hopefully, we can do something to, as Mr. Friedman said, you know, that's one of the things that we could do. I mean, and we're not trying to open a can of worms with everybody that's got a wet basement in Lepore County, because we know they're out there. But I also think that, somebody's trying to log on. I also think that the county, if the county's gonna put money out, the county needs to go after the developer or at least do something here to try to offset and at least not let them continue building out there until it's done.
I think it would be irresponsible, not only on the builder, but the developer, but also on the county to let further development go on.
Right.
If, from what I've heard, been keeping up with this, that was stated earlier, we didn't have a problem early on in that subdivision until they started building where they're at now, which obviously, they have interrupted the subterranean water system there, and it's gotta come up somewhere. And any future development is just gonna make it worse. So that needs to be addressed too. But I will look at the plans that Mitch and Jay have, make sure everybody has that. And you're right, we need to figure out what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it, who's gonna do it, and who's gonna pay for it.
And it'd be nice to have someone, and I don't know who all viewed the plan, but it'd be nice, and I'm assuming Al Wallace is part of the plan? I'm seeing heads shake, yes?
If you all will check your emails, just double-check, because March 22nd, I sent to commission and council schematics and budget prepared by Christopher Burke Engineering. So double-check, March 22nd, 4:22 PM. I made sure the council and commission had the plans, the budget. But again, I know with emails, sometimes it's erratic, but that's, that's when it shows it was sent out.
But...
Did that be sent out again?
Sure.
He's gonna send it out again? Are you sure?
Yeah, I will.
Great. The other thing that I'd like to do is, I know, and I'm looking at Mike Coolin right now, so people at home, I'm looking at. It would be very good, and I know you're not on the drainage board anymore, but if the drainage board knows that there's areas in the county, and we know they are, that have high water tables and there's problems, then the building commission or the planning commission needs to specify that basements aren't allowed, full basements aren't allowed in these areas. Or, you know what I'm saying? We need to at least notify people here so that, I mean, if we know there's a problem, you know, and we're allowing people to continue to build, and I'm not saying we are, I'm not saying that's happening. I don't want it to happen. But obviously, we know of areas that there shouldn't be full basements in, and we just need to make sure we, people know what those are. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and I do not disagree with that. But I cannot legislate from my desk. I can only enforce the laws that are already passed and on the books. So we need to have, you know, commissioners' legal counsel or councils' legal counsel and the planning commission legal counsel draft some ordinance or give me some legislation to enforce concerning that. I can't, if a permit application meets the requirements, I must approve it by law.
Right, I get, I get that part. But you could, wouldn't your first step be going to the planning commission and saying, we need to identify these areas and identify them and take a look at it? And at least have someone sign off on that there could be an issue there? Then if you need something else, then go to the commissioners. Because I'm sure, you know, I can't imagine the three commissioners would have a problem.
They might really take it up. But any change to the joint zoning ordinance goes to the planning commission first. The recommendation is made from there to the board of commissioners. So you definitely wanna start with the planning commission in terms of any changes on this.
But I mean, you know, those are things that we could at least, you know, at least somebody's gotta sign off and say, hey, we've notified you. You know what I'm saying?
Right, right. So we should generate perhaps some correspondence to the planning commission attorney concerning this and have this put on, on their agenda.
Sounds good.
Would you like me to do that? Or are you still gonna?
Was that a motion? Yes. Yes, Guy.
So I think first, we need to hear from Burke as to the issue about whether, you know, based on the land and what it is, whether it can handle additional houses, or, you know what I mean? And that way, you can take that to the planning commission, and the planning commission can go from there. Do you see what I'm saying? Because right now, you just go to planning commission and says, well, we need to have a moratorium on building on those lots, but you don't have any backup for that.
And I'm only referring to the three lots in this particular subdivision.
Correct.
At this time, until we get this issue resolved, because they were, as of not that long ago, still being actively marketed. That's my only thing, is I don't want somebody to buy those and be down the road, and they can't get their money back from the builder because, you know, if they decide, hey, you know, we want a full basement, and we're not gonna put a full basement in here. That's what I'm talking about.
Because they won't get permitted.
Right.
But in order to do that, we need some basis for the planning commission to make that decision.
Right, right.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Right.
I concur with that.
Right.
So it either has to come from Burke or Wallace, or you know, or somebody. So the planning commission can take that, take the next step, and then we can get that so that does not get permitted.
Right.
And I'm not directing Burke at this time. I don't, I think that's coming from the commissioners, so.
Right, and, no. And, and, and don't get me wrong. What I'm saying might not be the absolute order that it goes in, but I'm just telling you, it doesn't make sense that we're looking to spend 3/4 of a million dollars maybe out here, and somebody's still selling more lots. Until then, the three lots that are left, and its family of the people that developed it, and there's no recourse on them, but we're bearing the cost of all this. And, and these people are suffering because it seems like every time a house comes in, it maybe gets worse, is what I'm hearing, so.
You know, Randy, not only that, but I'm not an attorney, of course, nor do I wanna be. But it would seem to me, let's say that they do sell a lot next week, and people wanna go out there to build a home, and then they find out, well, you can't have a basement, or if you do, he's gonna make the problem worse, or for whatever. So they decide they're gonna sue the developer. We know there's a problem. We are, we have acquiesce to that. And now, I would see, like I said, I'm not an attorney, but I would think that we would also be held liable saying that you knew they had a problem, and you didn't really do anything to fix it, and now they, I bought this land, and I can't build a house there. I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing this out. I don't wanna see things get more out of hand than they are already.
And I agree. And unless Mike is redirected, he has to issue a permit.
If it meets the criteria, I have to issue a permit.
Right, but there's gonna be nothing that, you're not gonna look at a water spill.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the teeth, I don't have the legislation. But based on the conversations that's taken place between the attorneys, the commissioner, and the council today, I would ask for a motion from the commissioners to direct Burke Engineering to follow through with what Rich and Randy had stated about, is it feasible to even build on these lots? And if it's not, and we have that report furnished to the commissioners, because they, they're directing Burke Engineering, and that information is applied to us.
Right now, we're in the workshop. We can't, we can't make any votes.
And really, these are two separate issues. One, the commissioners have gotten Burke involved to design and talk about a potential remedy out here. But in terms of a moratorium going forward on permits, that also would go through the building commissioner's office, and you could be directed by the planning commission on that, to establish a moratorium on building in areas that are susceptible to high groundwater table, at least building with a basement. So those are really two separate issues. But I'm gonna resend what Burke sent out to everybody on March 22nd.
And it could be as simple as, until this issue is resolved, we're gonna hold off issuing building permits on those three lots. I'm not saying they're not buildable. I'm just saying, you know, there's no sense in making it worse.
I suppose if they were being built with a crawl space, it would make a huge difference than...
Right, I mean, but you can allow them, I mean, if Burke says, let them build, I don't care.
I have the water levels on those lots, lot 39.
You gotta step up to the microphone, sorry.
Lot 39, the water level is 42 inches below the surface. Lot 40 is 30 inches, and lot 41 is 34 inches. So it's pretty high on those three lots.
They'd have trouble getting a septic permit on those. Right. And that, that's where the health department looks at the septic, the water levels for the septic system, because it has to be, and it could be though, they could say, you can put it in, but put a mound system in, and that still doesn't come to your, I mean, the building department has nothing to do with it.
So a couple of quick things. One of those lots is actually the lot that the retention pond sits on. So I don't know how you could even build on that, but it's been, it had been for sale. And then, I don't remember who mentioned it, but the flooded ag land to the south and the Sevius Sunrise subdivision going in. I know that right now JB West has 13 homes going into that subdivision. We have personally seen water being pumped out of some of the homes out there as well. So again, this is a, this is this whole area. I mean, I'm not saying you need to run piping into their subdivision. I'm just saying that the plan that we've been, that's been discussed, I believe we got it to the commissioners without Wallace, but we ended up, COVID happened, and we couldn't come to the commissioners meeting to present the, or to the council meeting to present the actual plan.
Because it did, it just kinda ended there.
It stalled. It absolutely just stalled in March of last year, so.
And, and one of the other things that hopefully could come out of this meeting is the planning commission, and I'm looking at you again, Mike. When somebody comes to you with a, and I say you, but when somebody comes to the planning commission with a subdivision, I think obviously groundwater is something we need to seriously start taking into account in this county as far as whether or not they need that and have more tests done. Because I know for a fact, being in real estate for 23 years and knowing a lot of developers and seeing a lot of subdivisions go in, groundwater, the groundwater level isn't, aside from the septics, it's not, it's not a factor. So you dig that first basement, and you hit, well, I mean, that's, that's when you find out when you're in trouble, so. Is there anybody else on the Zoom that wanna talk? Dwayne, I know you just wanted, dying to talk.
Nah, I'm just taking it all in.
Right, all right. Any other commissioners or council members?
Hi, Randy, Joe Hany here. Yeah, I think it's crucial we get a lot of this information in so we can go ahead and make an informed decision about what we need to do here. And I'm glad for the information that was presented here tonight and to look for solutions here so we can move forward.
Great. I think it's important just to get everybody on the same page because as you just stated, I think maybe when COVID hit or whatever, we just seem to be missing a chunk in between there, so. And this isn't a guarantee that we're gonna do something, or this isn't a promise that something's gonna be done, but at least we're moving forward with the process. In other words, the funding has to come in, so, you know? Because there's more members than just me. I can only speak for myself.
I just have a question. Is there any funding possible? I know Mike made a haggle about all the ag land to the south. And the farm that is in our backyard lost a lot of crops, not last summer, but the summer before. And I even took pictures, and I presented them at one of the meetings. There is just this huge area in their crop that was just destroyed because of the water. It was incredible. I've never seen anything like that before. So I don't know if there might be any funding So I don't know if there might be any funding for agriculture as well to help with this that, that might, we might be able to pull that? Because they definitely did lose a lot of crops two summers ago, maybe last summer too. I, I can't recall, but.
They didn't plant last summer?
Yeah. So the first, the 18 or 19, they, nothing grew in this whole section. And then the next, the next year, they just didn't even plant there because it was kind of worthless for them. So I wondered if maybe there's ag money that could help as well.
I, I just remember FEMA money coming in for Highway 8 or something to that effect when that area got flooded.
Because the road got.
And the road got.
Do you have anything to add, Mike, before we close this out?
Two, two things, and then that's all I have. As far as the ag grants, we have, our local office would be the Soil and Water Conservation District. They work a lot with NRCS. There's different types of grants that, that come through those departments. I'm not all that familiar with them. I just know that they exist. So that's one avenue for somebody to, to check into Soil and Water Conservation District and NRCS. The other thing I was gonna say, as far as the moratorium on, on, on the building, we don't always know if somebody's gonna put in a basement, crawl space, what, what they're gonna do. And when people are furnished with soil boring reports, they're just told, hey, there's water 38 inches down. You might want to put a pump in. They're not told how bad it is. So I, I'm just, I'm not sure how we achieve the, the moratorium and, and I'm gonna have to defer to legal on, on that.
And I too would defer to legal and to the engineering experts to say if we should hold off at least until, or maybe the building permits need to be scrutinized a little bit more than the average building permit to make sure they're not putting in a full basement. And if they say, no, we're putting in a full basement, have them sign a waiver that says, if you got a problem, don't come to us.
Right.
It's that simple. You've been warned. So, you know, you can't stop, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying they can't, you know, never build or do anything, but at least if you get them to sign off.
Right. I don't disagree with that. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Does anybody have any questions?
Appreciate you being here.
Mike?
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else? Not adjourned. Thank you.